We've got, um...
Sorry, you can't go that way, it is illegal. Oh! That's not how you get out!
I'm so sorry.
Indeed, yes.
Stand it, Barry! Carry! Stand it!
My roast again, that's good one. Christ, Drew!
The bride will come to you, the house! Bride!
I think that gold jungle will show down there.
I lost my bandage, I was scared. Oh, my kids are going too much. They've been brought along with the astrophysic. No, it's just children, we need to strengthen them. I love you, love you.
What's going on in here?
You can stand your own feet. I'll find a friend.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
Lost her. I felt very proud of her.
Okay, Mo. They're rapping trumpet, though, I think.
They're so savoring.
Good evening, everyone. We are gathered here this evening for a special act of remembrance, to commemorate the sacrifice of so many on the beaches of Normandy eighty years ago today, from the D-Day landing. And a special welcome to the Deputy Lord Lieutenant, Daphne Allen, who took the salute this evening and will light the beacon later on. I am honoured to welcome Abel Seaman, Arthur Noby Clark of the Royal Navy, who served on D-Day those eighty years ago and is here this evening with his family. Welcome to the members of the Royal British Legion, councillors, also, the Royal Air Force Association. Also, welcome to the Two-Nine-Five Squadron air cadets who still carry the same designation as the squadron that flew out of Riven Hall and delivered troops by air on the eve of D-Day. Welcome also to all the other community groups that are represented here this evening, the army cadets, the police, Second Witten Boys Brigade, the Guiding Association and the Scouting Association. All of the other members of community groups who represent the spectrum of Witten's community. You are welcome. We will now sing "Our God, Our Help" in ages past.
Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn, at the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them.
We will remember them.
Hooray! Shot!
We will now hear the grim facts of D-Day, the sheer number of troops involved and the testimonies of those who survived. The D-Day landings of the sixth of June nineteen forty-four was the largest seaborne invasion in history. Along with the associated airborne operations, it marked the beginning of the liberation of France and Western Europe. Unprecedented coordination between allied nations and intensive planning from engineers, meteorologists, logistics and countless more led to a force from thirteen countries approaching the Normandy coast in a five-thousand-vested armada. In the early hours of D-Day, twenty-one aircraft from Two-Nine-Five Squadron, supported by aircraft from other squadron, dropped the first troops of the invasion force into Normandy. A total of twenty-four thousand paratroopers and airborne troops landed behind German lines to provide tactical support. At dawn, a massive naval and aerial bombardment commenced in an attempt to suppress the German defences and weaponry. This was followed by a ground force of more than one hundred and thirty thousand troops, who came ashore on five beaches across a fifty-mile stretch of the Normandy coastline, with the first waves off them facing intact German defences. By the end of D-Day, there had been ten thousand allied casualties, yet this was only the beginning. The ensuing Battle of Normandy was to last into August and cost tens of thousands of lives, as it defeated and repulsed the occupying German forces eastward. It was a decisive success for the Allies and paved the way for the liberation of much of North West Europe.
Marie mounted for the Women's Royal Naval Service when she turned seventeen. She writes, "The dockyard was positively buzzing. Just before D-Day, of course, there was a whole armada out there. We knew something was happening, something major, but I can't remember if we were ever given any detail. On the sixth of June, using my VHF set, I was told, or perhaps I just realised, that I was putting messages directly through to commanders on the French beaches. I threw the switch and relayed the first ones, and when they threw theirs and relayed their messages, I heard loud sustained gunfire. I could hear it very clearly and I was terrified. It brought it home to me that this was a war and men were dying. I'd known the refusal, of course, but you were suddenly aware of the awful horror of it."
I was nineteen and on the tank landing ship that had now travelled overnight from Portsmouth. I remember it like it was yesterday. We were all young, it was absolute chaos.
At four AM on the sixth of June, I was put on watch until eight AM. We're about a mile and a half from the beach and once the barrage started, there was so much going on and the noise was so great, I suppose it was all quite a bit scary.
We were in an LST landing craft at the big ramp up. We could hear everything happening around us but couldn't see a thing with the ramp up. All of a sudden, they opened the doors and dropped the ramp. We came off the ramp and onto the beach and were amazed.
I went in with the Canadians on Judo Beach in the first wave of landing. My job was to find the quickest route off the beach and get the soldiers moving to them as fast as possible. There were Canadians falling and dying all around me. I kept on running.
We should never forget that the freedoms that we enjoy and take for granted were wanted defended at such great cost by people like these.
They shall grow not old as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn, at the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them.
We will remember them.
Hooray! Shot!
When you go home, tell them of us and say, "For your tomorrow, we gave now today."
Hooray! Staged it! Hey!
On this day eighty years ago, the then-President of the United States Franklin D Roosevelt prayed this prayer. "The hopes and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere, march with you. Let us all beseech the blessing of Almighty God upon this great and noble undertaking." His Majesty King George VI said this. "I hope that throughout this present crisis of the liberation of Europe, there may be offered some earnest, continuous and widespread prayer. At this historic moment, surely not one of us is too busy, too young or too old, to play a part in a nationwide, a worldwide vigil of prayer at this great crusade. Here from every place of worship, from home and factory, from men and women of all ages and many races and occupations, our intercessions rise. Then, please, God, both now and in the future not remote, the predictions of an ancient Psalm may be fulfilled. The Lord will give strength to his people. The Lord will give this people the blessing of peace." Psalm twenty-nine, verse eleven. Franklin D Roosevelt continued, "As we stand upon the threshold of the greatest adventure in our history, let us now offer to Almighty God all our powers of body, mind and spirit, so that our great endeavour may be thoroughly finished. To us is given the honour of striking a globe for freedom which will live in history. And in the better days that lie ahead, men will speak with pride in our doings. We have a great and righteous cause. Let us pray that the Lord mighty in battle will go forth with our armies, that his special provision will aid us in the struggle. And so we pray. Almighty God, our sons, pride of our nation, this day have set upon a mighty endeavour, a struggle to preserve our kingdom and republic, our religion and our civilisation, and to set free a suffering humanity. Lead them straight and true. Give strength to their arms, stoutness to their hearts, steadfastness in their faith. They will need thy blessing. Their road will be long and hard, for the enemy is strong. He may hold back our forces. Success may not come with rushing speed, but we shall return again and again. And we know that by thy grace and by the righteousness of our cause, our sons will triumph. They will be sore tried by night and day, without rest until the victory is won. The darkness will be rent by noise and flame. Men's souls will be shaven with the violences of war. For these men are lately drawn from the ways of peace. They fight not for the lust of conquest. They fight to end conquest. They fight to liberate. They fight to let justice arise and tolerance and goodwill among all thy people. They yearn but for the end of battle, for their return to the haven of home. Some will never return. Embrace these fathers and receive them, thy heroic servants, into thy kingdom. And for us at home, fathers, mothers, children, wives, sisters and brothers of brave men overseen, whose thoughts and prayers are ever with them, help us, Almighty God, to rededicate ourselves in renewed faith in thee in this hour of great sacrifice. But because the road is long and a desire is great, I ask that our people devote themselves in a continuance of prayer. As we rise to each new day and again when each day is spent, let the words of prayer be on our lips, invoking thy help to our efforts. Give us strength too, strengthen us in our daily tasks, to redouble the contributions we make in the physical and the material support of our armed forces. And let our hearts be stowed to wait out the long prelude, to bear sorrows that may come, to impart our courage unto our sons wheresoever they may be. And, O Lord, give us faith. Give us a faith in thee, faith in our sons, faith in each other, faith in our united crusade. Let not the keenness of our spirit ever be dulled. Let not the impacts of temporary events, of temporal matters, of fleeting moments, let not these deter us in our incomparable purpose. With thy blessing, we shall prevail over the unholy forces of our enemy. Help us to conquer the apostles of greed and racial arrogance. Lead us to the saving of our country and with our sister nations into a world unity that will spell a sure peace, a peace invulnerable to the schemings of unworthy men, and a peace that will let all men live in freedom, reaping the just rewards of their honest toil. Thy will be done, Almighty God, through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Then a contemporary pair that was written for these D-Day celebrations. Much shorter. "God our refuge and strength, as we remember those who faced danger and death in Normandy eighty years ago. Grant us courage to pursue what is right, the will to work with others, and strength to overcome tyranny and oppression through Jesus Christ, to whom be dominion and glory now and forever. Amen. If you know and you have an order of servishing, join together in those words that Jesus taught us to say when we pray, in the words of the Lord's Prayer, saying, "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy keepers come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. And lead us not in the temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, wherever and ever. Amen."
Hooray! Shot!
A blessing. Almighty and eternal God, from whose love in Christ we cannot be parted, either by death or life, here are prayers and thanksgivings, all whom we remember this anniversary day. Fulfill in each of us the good purposes of your holy works. Help our nation shape a lasting peace. Help us pass on the gift of freedom and peace, so costly won, to generations yet unborn. The blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, be with you all and remain with you all, this day and forevermore. Amen.
If you could please turn and we'll have to light the beacon. It's due at nine fifteen and so we have a short interlude before that will take place. Please do stay and it will take place just over to my right hand side. Thank you.
It's gonna blow up. It's going up to the top.
Let us remember those who made their lives a home as a goal during the D-Day landing. Who was that who signed up?
Let us remember those who returned to restore their relationships and rebuild their working lives after years of conflict and turmoil. Let us remember the families that lost husbands, wives, sons, daughters and sweethearts. Let us remember the servicemen and servicewomen and merchant seafarers of all nationalities, from all countries, who fought, suffered and died during the D-Day landings and six years of war. Let us all remember those in the Royal Navy, the Army, the Royal Air Force, Merchant Navy and our allies. The brave people who kept us safe on the home front and abroad. And those in reserved occupations during the difficult time of war. Let us remember the brave doctors and nurses who cared for the wounded. The men and women who toiled in the fields. The coal mines, the factories and the air raid wardens, police officers, firemen, ambulance drivers. And the young people of the scouts and guides, who all played such a vital role in the war. Let us remember.
Thank you so much for attending this evening's act of remembrance. You are welcome to stay and remember in your own way around the beacon, but feel free to leave and go back to your homes and remember at home in your own way. Thank you.